Good morning, everyone. This, the recess session for Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, is hereby called to order. We don't normally do a period of silence or the pledge for recessed sessions, but I do want to recognize the death of someone significant in Naggs Head, and that's Jerry Everett McManus of Naggs Head who died Tuesday, June 15th. For 18 years, Jerry served his community. This community is a captain with the Naggs Head Volunteer Fire Department. He also served on the Naggs Head Planning Board and the Town of Naggs Head Damage Assessment Team, and he is survived by his wife Dee McManus and two sons, Dean and Patrick, and their families, and we express our condolences to his family and our appreciation to him for his service to the, to the community. I also want to say for the public who may be watching that we have two excused commissioners this morning. That's Commissioner Michael Sears and Commissioner Renee Cahoon. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Kevin Brinkley is participating with us remotely this morning. So that brings us to our first item, which is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Kevin, I'll poll you, since I couldn't hear, are you an aye?
I, I was an aye. I thought I, I seconded that.
You seconded it. But yes, sir.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I would also point out, since we have one of our members participating remotely, the votes need to be done by a roll call vote.
Very well, thank you. We, we will do that, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I don't see anyone.
No.
All right, so there, we have no one present for public comment this morning. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which only has one item, which is a budget adjustment, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda at present.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Uh, need, roll, roll.
Aye. I'm sorry, I do need to do this by roll call. Thank you. Sorry, Kevin, I ask you to vote again. I do have to go by roll call. So Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is an aye. Thank you. You're probably gonna have to do that more than once this morning. We don't debate consent agendas. I do want the public to know, for those who may not read the materials that are available online, I do want, for the public's benefit, to know that what that amendment was about was the application of American Rescue Act funds for some Naggs Head water line replacements, and we are appreciative of those funds. The next item on our agenda is approval of the pay plan recommendations, and I'll call on Manager Garman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good morning. So, as you know, it's your June regular meeting. You had a presentation from Becky Veezy with the MABS Group, who provided you with the report on the pay plan study that the board had approved last fall. So we've been working with Ms. Veezy on several of these recommendations. Ms. Veezy had done a market comparison with other communities, mostly in Northeast North Carolina, to look at our different positions in our pay plan, to make sure that we remain competitive. She had met with a staff and a board-appointed committee of two commissioners to talk about our town, the town goals for remaining competitive and making sure that we're staying on track with other communities. That information was presented back to the board at a workshop. The board agreed that we wanted to be sort of a leader in pay in the market in the region, and as a result of that, the original recommendation for the pay plan was increased by 3% as a whole across the board. Additionally, the board had looked at a 2.6% cost of living adjustment. That's not necessarily part of the study, but it's part of the budget, and that would apply to all the employees. So what you have here in front of you are the results of the study. What we're really asking the board to approve is the pay plan, which I believe was the fourth attachment. It, it's, let's see, the next one, Michelle.
It's the pay grade revised.
Now, the one prior to that.
Pay grade revised.
The one in front of that. It's the fourth one down on the list.
Yeah.
It's the one you haven't hit yet.
No, no, the fourth one.
Fourth one down, two, three.
There we go.
Yes, yes.
It's like playing Battleship.
Okay, here we go. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, this is the, the grade, the grade list with all the positions. Some of the position titles have been modified based on recommendations from Ms. Veezy. Obviously, some of the grades of the positions have changed based on market findings, and then obviously the ranges have changed. There's a hiring rate and a maximum rate listed. I would note that we have modified this list to include not only the 3% across the board increase for market, but also the 2%, 2.6% COLA. So this would be the list that would go into effect on July 1. So, this is the, the primary component of what we're asking the board to approve as part of the recommendations. There was an option included in the report that Becky mentioned in her presentation last month. That was the option that looked at how we were going to implement the plan with respect to where people were gonna fall in their ranges. The board sort of gave consensus to Ms. Veezy to, to look at option three, and that was included in the budget. So when you approve the budget, you're essentially approving option three, as well as the COLA and the within-grade increases. So this is just the pay plan. What, what we'll, one thing we'll note, this does not define which positions are exempt and non-exempt. After speaking with John Leidy yesterday and Ms. Veezy, that, that would be delegated to staff to determine based on FLSA criteria. So we're, we're not asking the board to approve that necessarily, just the pay plan, including the position titles, the grades, and the salary ranges. Beyond that, just make a few other notes. Further along in here, we had talked about some of the other recommendations. Ms. Veezy had looked at the 401K contribution. Currently, the town contributes 2% as a match to the employee. Ms. Veezy had recommended going up to 3% and not requiring a match, with the goal of getting to 5% after several years, but this year, we're looking at 3%. Also, she had recommended modifying the town's life insurance. Currently, it's $30,000 maximum. This would modify that to one times the employee's salary. So those items have been budgeted as well, and that's what, what's included in the budget ordinance that you have later in the agenda. So maybe we can just start by talking about the pay plan.
Just one quick question about the, the 401K contribution, adding the 1%, that would be to all positions or just positions other than police?
That's a good point. Police, we're required to contribute 5% for police, and so this is just for all non-sworn law enforcement positions.
Right. Just wanna make sure that that's clear, that this does not include police.
Yes.
And that, that's also in the personnel policy, so, good point. Thank you.
Yes, okay. First, I wanna thank staff, who I know contributed a lot of time and effort to this across all the departments, and I wanna thank Ms. Veezy and her company for their, their excellent work on this, and this is something the board has wanted to have taken care of. There has been some discussion about some of the positions in here and where they've landed in terms of, of, of grade, and I'd like to give the board some space to have that conversation and to ask any questions about that. I understand that, I'll, I'll ask, I'll start by asking a question. I know that this has been pretty, pretty thoroughly vetted. Is there a compelling reason why the, the board shouldn't make adjustments in some of these grades if they see fit?
Well, the, the recommendation here from Ms. Veezy was simply looking at a market comparison, and that's what she was charged to do.
Okay.
And so that's what she feels like she's done. So, you know, if there's other information that exists that maybe she didn't have, that might be relevant, but this is really what she was charged to do.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so I'll ask first Commissioner Brinkley, if you have questions or concerns.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to echo what you said, appreciation to Andy and his staff, as well as Becky Veezy, a lot of time and effort went into this pay study, and I, I appreciate that. I think it's gonna be good for our employees. As you know, I sent an email to the board and to, and our manager, Garman, regarding, and I'm talking about position, a position that I held for a number of years, and my experience in that position. I don't doubt Ms. Veezy's information that she provided in her, in her report. The email that I sent regarding the increase of two grades to the police chief's position, and I understand the police chief is lumped in with other department heads. My experience as the police chief, and that's the only thing I'm speaking to, is I couldn't understand the increase in two grades for that position. That is not a reflection of our current police chief, it's only my experience in that position that I held for nine years. That's my comment in regards to it. It's, it's nothing against anybody else lumped in there, nothing against our police chief. It's just my experience, and I felt compelled that I needed to at least express my personal experiences in regards to the time that I held that position. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Commissioner Brinkley. Commissioner Fuller, any comments or questions?
The only thing I would say following up to Commissioner Brinkley would be that there's, I guess, horizontal and vertical ways of looking at this, and I'm sure that Ms. Veezy would rank any of those that are, she ranked a grade 20. If we change one, then I think, I don't know what she would recommend, but I think she would recommend they all be changed, for an equity reason.
Yes, understood. You know, in, in looking at, at these and, and adding the context, if, if I may, if you were.
Oh, I'm fine, yeah.
And thinking in, in the context, those department heads are those that a manager has the most direct, has the direct impact on how they are graded and compensated, and we're in the position where we're about to hire a new town manager sometime, in, in the next few months, we hope. We are proceeding with that search, and I don't disagree with Ms. Veezy's work in terms of where she has put these folks in terms of grade, but I have a suggestion that, that may help sort of reconcile the, the chief's concerns and some others that I heard, and that is that if we took all of those positions that are grade 20 to grade 19, and took the position that's grade 19 to 18, then that gives the new manager an opportunity to come in, because one of the first things they're going to do is to evaluate departments and how they're functioning, and gives them an opportunity to confirm or affirm what Ms. Veezy has found and what we all generally agree in terms of where, where folks may belong. She, she may, or the new manager, whoever they may be, may or may not, but if we put them in this position, then it doesn't give them a little latitude in which to, to operate, because it's hard to move people down, it's easy to affirm and move people up. And that's my only thought about those positions that, you know, may help reconcile where Commissioner Brinkley is, is, as well.
Mayor, I, I, I appreciate your comments, and I, I certainly support that, and in regards to Commissioner Fuller's response, I, I, I know that they're all together, and that, you know, that's all department heads. I can't speak to the, the job. All of our department heads do a great job, and just my personal experience with that one position, that, that's the only one, and I know that we're not gonna pull that one position out. I don't, I'm not asking that. I just, I felt, again, felt compelled that I needed to at least share my personal experiences that, that I had over these nine years in that position.
All right, thank you. Okay, any further comments or questions about the, the report then? Hearing none, then I think a motion to adopt the report either as is or amended would be in order. And as the, the mayor, I'm also willing to make, I think I can, and am willing to make that motion. John's shaking his head.
You may.
So I would, I would recommend adoption of the, the pay plan with the following modifications, and that would be that those positions that are listed as grade 20 become grade 19, and that that position listed as grade 19 become grade 18. And that would be the motion, and then I would pledge in our conversations with the, the manager to convey the information that I just said, which is that, and to have a discussion about the study, and, and that we've given them room to evaluate staff and come back to us with further recommendations if they wish.
Is that all part of your motion?
That is not part of the motion. The motion ends with, with moving the grade 20 to grade 19 and the grade 19 to grade 18.
Second.
All right, any further discussion then? Hearing none, then I will poll the board, starting with Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is an aye.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Further question? I mean, I, I know what we just did, but the, the pay scale, do we need to adopt that? I don't think that was in here, that we needed to adopt the new pay scale, but my question is, have we, have we adopted the new pay scale, or do we need to adopt the new pay scale?
I thought that was the motion, but I may be wrong.
Now, we, we moved to put people in positions on the new pay scale, but I don't think we've adopted the new pay scale.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
He did start out, that's the person he said.
That was to, to adopt it with those modifications, with those changes.
Okay, close, okay, the, okay. So, the pay scale that we have, which is a separate document, was part of your motion?
It might be good to go ahead and, and adopt the pay scale as a separate document.
Yeah, 'cause I was only thinking of this document.
Yeah, it's, it lists the, the hiring, as well as the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum for all grades, so I think it'd be worth it to go ahead and do that.
Because we could create a new position that might be, let me get that.
Okay.
We could create a new position that's a grade 24.
I see.
But yet, we don't have grade 24 adopted yet.
Understood, and that's the preceding document that we have.
Correct, correct.
Yes, okay, yes.
So I'd make a, a motion that we adopt the new pay scale that was provided to us in our package.
I'll second that. So any, any further discussion on that? Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I assume that that adoption will be effective July 1?
It is, it, I think that's actually incorporated in the heading.
The document, it's the first line of the document. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Brinkley, aye. Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is, thank you, and the mayor is also aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, Andy, do you have anything else on that?
I think it would be good for the board to, to affirm the two other changes, the 401K and the life insurance, even though those are incorporated into the budget, maybe the board could make a motion to affirm those items.
Okay, I think that that would be...
Recognizing that the 401K does not include law enforcement.
Correct.
I'd make that motion recognizing that the 401K change does not include law enforcement.
And so your motion is for the 401K and the life insurance change?
Correct.
All right.
As recommended by?
As recommended by staff. Or the...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just the, the further discussion, obviously, when we talk about law enforcement, the whole concept of why they're excluded is because they were, the state legislature mandated certain 401K provisions for law enforcement, and what this does is it makes everybody else whole with law enforcement.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it creates equity among all our, our employees.
Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate you saying that as a message to, to whoever may be, may be listening or wondering about that. All right, thank you. Then that would bring us to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of updates to the personnel.
I don't think you got a vote on that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Golly. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all those in favor, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor's an aye. I knew this would be an interesting meeting. All right. Now, I believe we're ready to go to approval of, of updates to personnel policy. Amy, are you going to present those?
I'm, I'm.
You're, you're on my agenda to do that, so.
Is it yours? Amy.
I've got it right here. I put Amy. I'm, I'm. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. And I wanna thank Andy and John for helping put this all together. It was definitely a team effort, so if I'm missing something, please jump in and, and correct me. And I'm not sure if we wanna adopt these as separate motions or just adopt all the changes as presented, but I'll kinda go through the list a little bit, which we've already discussed, and again, the pay plan, the budget, and the personnel policy, all are very much interrelated, and so while some of Becky's recommendations to kind of just do a, an overhaul or a more comprehensive look at our current personnel policy, we really felt like we couldn't implement some of these changes that we have, you know, incorporated into the budget and incorporated into the pay plan without fixing some specific parts of the personnel policy to, to stay in compliance. So, the first one that we are asking for is Article 4, Section 6, which has to do with promotions, and what we have found out is that there's two sections of the personnel policy that are contradict each other when it comes to promotions, as well as the budget ordinance, so we've made a change to the budget ordinance also. So simply, for Article 4, Section 6, we just say refer to Article 5, Section 11, which deals with promotion, so that's the only change that we've made to that. And again, then the second one is, oh, I'm going in order, sorry, of the, of the personnel policy. The, the second one on the list, it deals with part-time workers, and essentially what it does is it, if we do have a part-time employee that does the same job of a full-time employee, Becky's recommendation was that they should, even though part-time employees aren't subject to the pay scale, that they should at least be making the minimum or the hiring rate, depending on how long they've been there, of that pay scale. So that essentially brings a full-time person doing the same job, or, sorry, brings a part-time person doing the same job of a full-time person to the, either the hiring rate or minimum of that pay scale. The third has to do with Article 5, Section 10, probation, and again, this is incorporated into the budget, and it was a recommendation that we discussed, that Becky recommended that was discussed, I believe, at a board meeting with, with the Personnel Policy Committee, and that is, in order to stay competitive and be at the market with our, you know, within the region, that probationary increases should be reinstated. Her recommendation was a, that they, probationary employees will receive a 5% salary increase, however, that salary increase is not recommended to bring them to anywhere above the midpoint, so it would get them to the midpoint, but no higher, of their pay range after six months of satisfactory service, and that would be implemented across all departments equitably and consistently. The third is, again, just kind of fixing that promotion piece that we had discussed earlier. It talks about promoting employees from within in comparison with outside candidates, essentially, and it, it gives the town manager some discretion in setting a salary to, to be internally equitable if we do hire an internal candidate. Before, we were limited to 2.5% if an internal candidate was promoted. And then the last piece, which we had discussed also, is fixing, or I guess reflecting the recommendation for the 401K, and it gives the board flexibility with implementing a 401K, so we don't have to come back every year with a set percent, and essentially, it addresses what Commissioner Fuller had brought up with the law enforcement. We are legally obligated, and we certainly do contribute 5% to all sworn law enforcement officers already, but it's just implementing her suggestion of kind of building our way back up to that 5% for all employees without having a match. And while this, again, doesn't have a certain percent in it, the recommendation in the, Becky's recommendation, as well as what is incorporated into the budget ordinance, is bringing everybody else that is not a sworn law enforcement officer up to a 3% town match with no required town contribution, and I think that covers everything in the personnel policy, unless John or Andy have any corrections or the, the board has any questions.
Board, any questions for Amy while she's at the podium?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, if I could, please, sir.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Kevin. I'm guessing he can't hear me.
Oh, can you hear us?
I can, I can just hear you now. Mayor, did you hear? I, I just had a quick comment, please.
Yes, please proceed.
I'm having trouble with the audio. If y'all can hear me, I can't hear anything that's being said.
Can you hear us?
I just heard Amy speak just now.
Okay, I guess my, my microphone's...
Can I go up and answer a question?
We can, we can hear you if you can hear me.
Yes, so...
Yep, yep, I can hear Amy. Amy, on Article 5, Section 10, probationary period of employment?
Yes.
The third paragraph, probationary employees will have no vested rights to any benefits except the group hospitalization health plans, which are, shall be subject to the terms of the policy. Just to be clear, they, they will still, or the town will still contribute to the retirement plan during their probationary period, correct?
Yes, sir, we start contributing on day one. If...
I just, I knew that we did, I just... I just, I knew that we did. I just, I did not know if that would, would not have been included in there, but I'm assuming to verify that.
Yes, sir. And you're referring to the, the, the state orbit retirement system?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fuller?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Alright, then, um, Kevin, can you hear us again at this point?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can hear you now.
Okay, very good. Then, uh, Commissioner Fuller is prepared to make a motion.
I would make a motion that we adopt all the proposed changes as presented by staff, recognizing the clarification that staff gave to Commissioner Brinkley's question.
And I'll make it, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is aye. And I'd like to thank staff again for all of their, all of their work on, um, these items.
Thank you.
Appreciate you getting that, everything tied into a nice bundle for us for, uh, something that I think's going to be really good for employees.
It was a busy week last week.
Sure it was.
I would like to ask a question. I know I made the motion, but, and it, but was, was in, was it in this where we agreed to the hundred thousand dollars with the, um, Old Nags Head Place? Was it in?
No.
None of that was in this?
Oh, for the budget ordinance, for the stormwater?
Right. That wasn't in this. That was earlier.
That's going to be in the budget, uh, the adopted budget, if you choose to adopt it. I've incorporated that into the budget ordinance.
That'll be the next.
Yes, it's, um, E three, yes, sir.
Right, okay. I have a question about that.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, Amy will ask you to stay at the podium then, since there is a question about that. And then, so the next item on our agenda then is adoption of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, budget, which includes the capital improvement program, the consolidated fee schedule, the debt lease schedule, the adoption of the, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget ordinance, and the resolution for committed fund balance, LEO separation allowance. And Amy, if you would clarify for me which of these we need to actually vote on?
Do they need to take separate motions, John, or can they, um, as presented?
I think... I think they can adopt all items as long, in one motion, as long as they recite them all. I think that, that would be necessary. Otherwise, they can do them individually, particularly if there's going to be any changes or modifications to anything.
Okay, alright, good. Then let's proceed with questions, and I know Commissioner Fuller has a question.
Just the, the one question, um, included in this was some stormwater work to be performed in Old Nags Head, Old Nags Head Place.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And there was an agreement that a hundred thousand would be provided by the HOA.
Yes, sir.
And the town would provide a certain amount. My real question is, is that hundred thousand number just a number that was pulled out of the air, or do we have some formula that we have where we partner with different neighborhoods or different entities? And how do we go about deriving that partnership number?
I'm not sure. I, I wasn't part of the initial discussions with the homeowners association, so I'm not, I'm not sure. I hate to not be able to answer a question on the spot, but I'm not sure how the hundred thousand came up. Um, I'm not sure how that was agreed upon. Um, I don't know if Andy might have a better...
I mean, I, I think the hundred thousand dollars in this case was a number that was derived from the HOA themselves as a, as an amount that they suggested to contribute. Uh, it's not based on any town formula that we have right now.
My, my only fear is that, you know, if we don't come up with some process to make it equitable throughout, we're just going to have numbers that are given to us. And so, um, not, not that I am upset that they agreed to provide a certain amount. We've often said, if you, if there's a partnership, everything gets moved up, but it's just a, what, what, what's the formula we use? That's, that's my question.
Right.
And right now, we don't have that.
Yes. And, and so the question will come up in the future from someone else. You know, how, how did you derive that, um, figure? And, and how did the town decide what it was going to contribute? In this case, there was a, you know, a significant process of conversations between the town staff and the, the association and a sort of parsing of the numbers that would make a project work, um, that was ultimately presented to us and, and, and with a little bit of, of back and forth discussion with the town engineer and some others who'd been, been involved in that. Um, I think, I do agree that having now been through that process, it would be beneficial if we could, if we could, um, sort of codify after the fact how we, um, arrived at something that was reasonable. If we can sort of, sort of describe what's the reasonableness of that approach, so that we have that for future reference when it comes up again.
I, I agree because, I mean, and in my opinion, you know, this area is sort of a terminal area. So it makes sense to partner. There are other areas that I think we have some issues in that I think are really the town responsibility and not a neighborhood, where the difference being, if you look at it as a transmission versus a distribution. This is a little area, but a big transfer, trans, um, transition line, if you will, of stormwater that's in, that goes through somebody's neighborhood, you know, I think a hundred percent of that should just be the town, as an example.
Right.
But, anyway.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I'd just like, uh, the staff to do a little bit more homework and come up with some formulas to provide to us.
Okay, thank you. Um, I didn't, uh, before I go to Commissioner Brinkley, I, I didn't ask nor give the opportunity, um, Amy, as to whether there were, there were any, uh, there was any further presentation of the stat, you know, that could, you've provided the board with all of this information. Is there anything from the podium this morning about any of these things that you would wish to present or highlight?
I can just kind of go over the changes, if, if you would like, um, in the memo, um...
I, I, I think that would be beneficial for the board to hear and for the public, uh, to understand. Commissioner Brinkley, is that okay with you, if she goes through that before I ask you for questions?
Yes, Mayor, it is. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Alright. Well, um, the board should have a, a memo, and it's, it's online in the packet as far as some of the changes that were made, reconciling the difference between the manager's recommended budget and the adopted budget ordinance that we have, uh, presented to you today for adoption. And I'll just go over that really quickly without reading it, line by line.
Please.
So, um, a- at the end of the memo, it illustrates what the new tax rates will be, um, upon adoption. And essentially, with the townwide tax rate, um, the manager's recommended budget recommended a one cent tax increase. Um, with the adopted budget, there's a two cent tax increase to the townwide rate to implement some of the, uh, board initiatives. Um, I, I think Andy did a good job of outlining those at the last meeting. It was important to the board to, you know, fund the CIP, not defer items that could cause problems down the road, implement the pay plan. Um, so that two cents helps fund the board initiatives. Um, and then, uh, as a result of one of the budget workshops, uh, the commissioners had a consensus to increase the townwide beach nourishment portion of the ad valorem tax, um, a quarter cent. So the adopt, the recommended budget was two point two five cents, and the adopted budget would be two and a half cents. That brings the townwide total, currently, it's twenty-six point five cents. Uh, the manager's recommended was twenty-seven point five cents, and the adopted would be twenty-eight point seven five cents. Again, uh, as a result of some of the budget workshops that we had, um, the board created new municipal, municipal service districts. Um, the current districts one and two will not change. They will remain at fourteen point three cents. Um, Municipal Service District Four, which, uh, is a combination of District One, which is, um, South Nags Head on the, um, east side of Oregon Inlet Road, as long as the west, is, combined with the west side of, of Oregon Inlet Road. Um, that is, um, a one cent increase to that, or a one cent newly implemented, I guess I should say, um, tax, and those will be reserved, restricted for beach nourishment. Um, and again, New Municipal Service Districts Three and Six, those, uh, will have a half cent tax newly implemented to those new municipal service districts. Um, so that's kind of a summary. And again, the municipal service districts and the, uh, townwide portion of, for beach nourishment, those will all be restricted into the capital reserve fund for beach nourishment. They will not be, um, rolled into the general fund, fund balance. I just want to make that clear. Um, we, uh, after, again, as, as a result of the board workshops, we took out the skate park. Um, and that was total a hundred and eighty thousand with a hundred and fifty thousand local funding and thirty thousand of grant funding. One thing that we did find out that we increased was that the tipping fees after the budget workshops, uh, the tipping fees have increased. Uh, we currently budgeted seventy-seven dollars a ton, um, and that would include the fuel surcharge. However, we found out that the new tipping fees will be seventy-seven dollars and four cents per ton before the fuel surcharge. And the fuel surcharges are almost three dollars a ton now. So I went ahead and, um, added an additional four dollars per ton uh, to reflect the new tipping fees. And that, uh, that adds up to thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars additional added to, um, tipping fees, and that would be eighty-one dollars per ton for nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six tons. And, uh, again, we did include that hundred thousand dollars that Commissioner, Commissioner Fuller has suggested from the homeowner, homeowners at the Old Nags Head Place neighborhood. Um, and that will increase, uh, that project there that the manager originally recommended at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Now that brings that project up to three hundred and fifty-five thousand contingent on that one hundred thousand dollars. There's just some, uh, vacancies have created the need to bump up, uh, health insurance in the general fund and in the water fund, um, and to, again, address some of the questions that the board had regarding the fire quint. Um, although that has no budgetary impact, um, we did take the board's comments into consideration and worked with the chief. Um, the CIP and the debt schedule change, have changed, and, um, we have identified a pre-production quint that we could purchase. Um, I think we have to sign a contract and give them a purchase order, um, the first of July. But that recognizes a cost savings of thirty-four thousand dollars. And again, it doesn't have a budgetary impact this fiscal year because it was financed in arrears. But we did take the board's comments into consideration and, uh, ref, made those reflected changes in the, um, debt and CIP schedules.
Thank you. Amy, before you leave the, uh, general fund category?
Sure.
Um, I have a question, um, about the tipping fees.
Okay.
And, uh, any, uh, light you can shed about, uh, what's driving those and where we can expect those to go in the future?
Well, I think the, the rising fuel costs, uh, it, it, that's been a fairly new thing that they've added in the past couple of years. And I think just because the cost of fuel has gone up, um, it, they, um, they have added that onto the tipping fees. But again, we're kind of at the mercy of, of what they set it at, and I don't think they're going to go down.
Sure.
But, um, again, you know, that seventy-seven dollars was, that we originally budgeted, did include the, the, the fuel surcharge. And now that seventy-seven dollars and four cents is more than what we even budgeted with the fuel surcharge. So, um, I'm not sure if it's, you know, this year we have had, it's been kind of unprecedented for the amount of, of tipping fees that we have paid. So I'm not sure if it's just because of sheer volume, um, but I can say, at least for the town of Nags Head, it's, it's probably been one of the highest years that we've ever had for, for tipping fees. So it might just be because of, of volume and high, um, gas prices.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, and then again, I can just kind of outline some of the things that we discussed as far as implementing the paying class study and the two point six percent COLA. Um, again, um, option three was what we had presented to the board, um, for adoption, which, um, combined, um, it looked at employees' years of service with the town and how many years they've been in their position. And it took the average of those two salaries, um, to come up with, with, um, their new salary. Again, the COLA originally was one point four percent in the manager's recommended budget. That's, uh, brought up to two point six percent. Um, again, the 401K brought up for non, non-sworn law officers, um, from two percent with a required match to three percent with no match. And again, that, it, we maintain that five percent. We've been contributed to, um, law enforcement officers. Um, and there was a contingency, um, you might recall, when the manager presented his budget, we really didn't have any, um, information as far as the paying class study. So we budgeted a hundred thousand contingency in the general fund and a ten thousand contingency in the water fund to implement, um, her suggestions. But now that we have found out what those suggestions are, we've budgeted them departmentally. Um, we did leave a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency in, um, the general fund just to, um, assist us with her consulting if, to implement it, because we want to get it right and make sure we understand it right. Um, and so we recognized the value of her time, so we left some money for, um, consulting fees. And, and any other, um, implementation, um, recommendations that she might have that the town manager, um, can, um, can implement, we've, we've left a small contingency to kind of tie up any loose ends or questions. And so the, um, the general fund, additional cost to implement the paying class study, the three percent 401K and the two and a half, two point six percent COLA is three hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars in the general fund, and in the water fund, it's fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We did, uh, increase the tax rate by one cent in the general fund, uh, with board guidance to assist with implementing the paying class study. And that left a little bit less, um, what, it, we reduced, uh, fund balance by thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars fund balance appropriation because we had a little bit left, just because the water fund of, the, because of the portion of the water fund. So, um, our budget ordinance has increased by twenty-six, to, in the general fund, to twenty-six million, four hundred five thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars. And in the water fund, um, the net position appropriation was increased by sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four thousand. And that brings the budget ordinance to five million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And now that you've been through all that, I'll ask, uh, the board for questions. Commissioner Brinkley, do you have any questions for Amy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Amy, when you, you mentioned something about, and, uh, I couldn't catch all of it, about the fire truck.
Yes.
And something needed to be signed. Are you saying that, uh, hey, if we went with the demo, I'm sorry, if the town went with the demo model that a contract would need to be executed by July first?
Yes, I think that, um, they're, they need to catch it in order to paint it the correct color. Um, and so they are asking to, um, to have a, a contract in place July first. Um, and I think the chief asked me if we could do a purchase order by July fourth. And, and I'm comfortable doing that, um, as long as the, the budget ordinance gets adopted on July first. It, um, our ordinance gives the manager the, um, it delegates the authority for the town manager to execute, um, formal, formal, uh, con, contracts for purchases. Um, so I would be comfortable doing that.
Okay. I, I, hey, when I spoke to the interim manager yesterday evening, I had just heard, there were still maybe some additional conversations, maybe that needed to be had, some people, um, and I guess I'll, I'll wait to hear what other commissioners may have to comment, but that, uh, that, that, I, not everyone was so old with the demo model.
Oh.
Um, but if something's got to be executed by July first, I, I don't guess that would waste a lot of time to, to discuss it in the future. So that was my question. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Kevin.
There may be some initial discussions about it. Uh, I mean, I could shed some light on, on that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so just my understanding of this whole situation, uh, originally, when the CIP request was made by the fire department, it was for... Originally, when the CIP request was made by the fire department, it was for one point three-five million, and the idea is that it would have been a custom truck, which is what they were used to, to doing in the past. They requested it in this year's CIP because they knew that it would take four hundred days to deliver a custom truck, and we were planning on financing that in arrears, so there would be no impact to the budget this year. If you look at that timeframe and coinciding that with the replacement schedule, their goal was actually to replace the truck next year, and that's what the replacement schedule calls for. So by doing this pre-production truck, we're actually replacing it ahead of schedule. And so while it saves a little bit of money, thirty-four thousand dollars, you know, it, it's not that significant, and it's, it's something the board may want to weigh in terms of, you know, do we go ahead and go forward with this pre-production model now, or do we just stick with the original plan? You know, Chief Wells had given me a memo with some additional details of everything that would be added onto the truck, you know, recognizing that, you know, we're just trying to get the equip, the equipment that we need and not any more than we need, and so the cost difference was really around forty thousand dollars between the custom truck and the pre-production truck, and you're, you're replacing the truck a year ahead of schedule essentially by doing that.
So Amy, if you can do quick math, the forty thousand dollars is what percent of the overall cost? Ten percent?
Well, I don't have my phone here to do the calculation, but.
I thought you could do it in your head real quick.
I don't want to give any wrong information, but I, I have that. The cost savings is thirty-four thousand dollars.
It's a four-hundred thousand dollar purchase?
Sorry, what, well, the original cost was in the CIP, in, in the presented, the recommended CIP was one million, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three percent? So it's a three percent difference.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Three percent difference, but then you're talking about money next year versus this year.
Let me, let me ask, our, I, I don't know to what extent the board wants to discuss this further.
Okay.
But apparently they, we may.
Okay.
And our meeting is on the seventh of July.
Yes.
If the board decided, yes, we wanted to proceed and execute the purchase order, is the seventh that much different from the first or the fourth? Or is that a hard deadline?
Uh, Chief Wells? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Chief.
No problem, sir. Thank you, thank you for allowing us to comment on it. That is a pre-production model. It is actually in the queue, so any disruption in that truck coming down the line delays it.
Okay.
And then they, they have multiple trucks coming behind it, so they've given us a fairly tight schedule to, to get it done, but it is workable.
Okay. Look.
I can, the only thing I can say is I can call the manufacturer and see if I can get them to, to give us some leeway if we are truly looking at that.
Well, I, I think what I would offer then is if you would ask that question.
Yes, sir.
It really doesn't so much affect what we're going to do today. I don't think we're going to modify the budget ordinance or do anything else today relative to, to that. So I, I would say if you would ask, and then if the answer to that is no, that it has to stay, then I will take it upon myself to poll the board and see what other discussion the board may wish, wish to have. So if, if that's reasonable, Commissioner Fuller?
I was just going to ask, if we get the pre-production, are you going to come back and ask us for something that's going to cost us more than thirty-four thousand dollars to put on the truck?
I would hope not. No, sir.
And I guess my other question is, have we developed specs and bid the truck?
No, sir. You were asking us to go get a, what was called a demo model. It's usually either a GSA or a, one that is just a on-the-shelf model, and they put them in the queues and start going down the line. So there was, the specs are online, and it is a factory spec, and then there's some modifications that we can do, but when it comes down the line, it, there's, there's no, it's, it's already built for, they've, they've ordered the materials, they've decided how they're going to do it, they've got the pumps on order and.
My next question is actually for the attorney. If we don't do specs, but can, can we contract to buy a truck that we want without putting it out for bid?
This is done through a, a contract that's already bid. I believe it's the Houston, the Galveston area compact contract is what you were looking at.
It's a GSA contract.
Right, it's a pre-bid type thing.
Okay. So it's just a process I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, we have, we have purchased vehicles in the past through that same agreement.
Okay, okay, good. I just want to make sure we're going through the process of.
I guess, if I could, Commissioner, to your question, you've asked about the percentage of savings, I guess, basically, by buying the production model, is, are we being penny wise and pound foolish if we may not get what, exactly what we need?
I mean, we're, we're saving three percent, but we're getting it early.
Mm-hmm.
And so what are, what are we saving? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's in the town's best interest.
Right.
And if the pre-production meets the fire department's needs, it's okay, you know, to save three percent.
Right.
But if it doesn't meet their need, three percent's not a lot.
Right. But we wouldn't make three percent on the money if we held it.
No.
Later.
Well, you know, if you divide, say you kept the truck twenty years and you divide the purchase price by twenty years, that's sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, and if you're going to now replace it a year early because you got it a year early, you know, it's almost a wash.
Right.
Might even be more expensive to do it that way.
All that said, we do have two commissioners who are not here. Chief, I'll, I think I'll stay where I was and ask you the same question. If you'll ask them about the production and about the, the seventh, and then we can give the board one more shot at this and then, and then move on.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Amy?
I think that's all I had to say, but I just did want to point out really quick. I know I had hit on it a little bit earlier, and I think I, we discussed it with the board at one of the workshops, but we did include some changes to the, the language in the budget ordinance, which I highlighted and read, and one was, one of the directives we were asked about doing budget amendments or transfers for items that were in the CIP. So on section seven, the budget officer, which is the town manager, I wanted to make sure that we noted that transfers couldn't be done for items that were included in the CIP without board approval. So I did include that language there without having to do another policy or anything like that, so hopefully that captured the intent. And then the, the next change was in the section, after that, section eight, the budget officer restriction, and again, it just has, has to do with providing some parity with the personnel policy as far as establishing raises and with, for town employees. So we feel like between the personnel policy and this change that everything is now, there's no contradicting, there's no policies or ordinance is contradicting each other. And so those are the only two changes that I wanted to point out, and I did, obviously, the general fund has paid off the water fund debt for the soundside event lien, so that used to be the last section of the budget ordinance, that went away because now that has been paid off. So those are the only changes I wanted to point out as far as the language, just to be very clear and to the budget ordinance.
Okay.
And I think that's it unless we had any other questions.
All right, so I'll, I'll ask one more time if there are additional questions. Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fuller?
Um, I, I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a statement, and before we vote on this.
Sure, go, go ahead. Now would be appropriate.
I mean, I, I, I think this is a big day for the board. I wish we all sit, all sitting here, but there's a lot of stuff in front of us, and one of the things that I think is happening is, I like to consider myself as being fiscally conservative, and, and I think I am, but there's a big difference between being fiscally conservative and kicking the can down the road. And I think the town, starting around two thousand and eight, maybe appropriately so with, with what was going on, but, but we've had a process of having to kick the can down the road, sometimes having to kick the can down the road. And I feel fortunate to be sitting on a board right now where I feel like we're able to do two, two big things, or maybe even three, but number one is we're able to get the classification and pay plan and employee salaries where they need to be, and, and we've done that, and I think that, I think that's a, a tremendous feat for us to get them back to where they need to be because we've kicked the can down the road. The other is, particularly on CIP, is the fact that we've been putting things off, we've had deferred maintenance on a lot of things, and I think this board recognizes, even though the manager, the past interim manager gave us a budget that we basically asked for, I think we had the foresight to look at what we had in front of us and say, look, we want to get back to where Nags Head needs to be on a number of issues, and I think this board, I appreciate being on this board, willing to look at those things and say, okay, it's time, we got to do these things. And, and it's very difficult when you see a board add to a manager's recommended budget, but it does happen, it's rare, but it, it does happen, and as I said, I think I'm conservative, but I'm, I'm tired of kicking, kicking the can. So that, and then the very last thing really is the municipal service districts as relates to beach nourishment, and I'm real happy with staff and Amy and everybody else to get us to the point that we are, the board gave some direction, I think decent direction, but staff ran with it and gave us something that I think all of us can live with, and I think it, I personally, you can always argue what's fair, but I think this, what we, what we are looking at is a very much more equitable way of looking at beach nourishment and how to pay for it. So thank you for indulging me in those comments.
And I agree with all of those comments. I would second all of that. So I will ask, the things that we need motions on are the, I know the, the budget ordinance and the resolution, do we need action on any of the other items?
I think John said you could take one action. I mean, from what I'm hearing, there weren't any changes other than a discussion, you know, to the fire truck that doesn't have any impact to the budget ordinance, so, and we will certainly wait on that to issue any purchase order or sign any contract. But I think what John had said, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we just list out the, the different things you're going to adopt in, in one motion? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess my question is, do we need to adopt the lease schedule and the consolidated fee schedule and the debt lease schedule? Do we need to adopt those?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Then a motion would be in order, listing all of those things that need to be adopted, and I agree, I did not hear any changes, so I believe that they would be as presented.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if I can understand what you, what needs to be included, that we approve as presented the capital improvement program, consolidated fee schedule, the debt reschedule, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget ordinance, and the resolution for committed unbalance, unbalanced law enforcement separation.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. John, that was adequately inclusive.
That was correct.
All right, great. Thank you. Any further discussion then? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is also aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, and, and appreciation to all of the staff who've had a hand in, in this work.
Thank you.
It's going to be a good year. It'd be, it'd be a really good year. A lot of stuff's going to happen. It's, it's pretty awesome. The next item then on our agenda is a resolution to oppose House Bill number four hundred ninety-six, authority to limit tree removal. This comes up every session or two, seemingly.
Thank you. Good morning. Presented to you a resolution regarding HB four ninety-six, which would limit municipal authority for tree removal regulations and ordinances, and I do note that there is a typo in the second whereas, it should obviously refer to the town of Nags Head. But essentially, the bill has two potential effects, the requirement that authorization be sought from the general assembly and received for new local government tree protection ordinance, ordinances, and also that it would have the effect of voiding existing local laws which have not previously received such special authorization. And I note in the memo to the board, there are at least two, I'm only aware of these two, special acts or session laws that pertain to the town of Nags Head and our ability to regulate tree removal. These are not broad in, in scope, they are limited in what types of regulations that we could adopt under these. So I do believe that if H four ninety-six were to be adopted, it would have some impact on our, on our regulations. And it's notable that the bill did pass the House overwhelmingly, seventy-two to forty-three, and is currently in the Senate, so it is in committee.
Okay, good. Then it's timely that we take action. I appreciate that. Thank you. John, it's not necessary that I read these.
No, sir, if you're going to, someone could make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Well, with, with the correction of the one typo in the second whereas, that it's the town of Nags Head rather than Indian Trail.
Indian Trail, right.
So that would be a motion to adopt the ordinance as corrected. The motion would be in order.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then I will poll the board. Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is an aye. Thank you, Michael, for tracking that and bringing that to our attention. The next item on our agenda would be items from the town attorney. Mr. Leidy?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Okay, all right, then that would bring us to, and, and if I may, Andy, do you have anything besides the closed session?
No, not today.
Then, then what I would do is skip on down to the board of commissioners' agenda, and I know Commissioner Fuller has an item to bring to us.
I would just ask that the board prioritize and work with staff to look at our traffic control map, which is something that the board approves, and reconcile what our traffic control signals are out in the town, and make sure that all our traffic signaling devices in the town are in concert with the traffic control map. And the net result of that would be for staff to bring us back a traffic control map that they see as being pertinent to what we need to adopt. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that I think there's some traffic control devices that we no longer need, maybe, that we could identify, like I know parking signs or. or something, that was that there. And, and staff could say, okay, well, it's on the map, that's why it's there, but we don't know what the reason is. Or there could be some other places where there might need to be no parking and we don't have signs and we might need to do stuff. It's more what I consider a housekeeping item. And I, I would also like to see as we work through our GIS process, that the traffic control map become digitized and available for public and et cetera. So, I, I'm just requesting, and if the board sees fit, that we request staff to prioritize that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley, I'll just ask if you're in, in accord with that.
Yes, to piggyback along with what Commissioner Fuller, I, I think ever so often, there needs to be a survey done to ensure that what signs are there matches up with our traffic control map and vice versa. Some signs may need to be removed and, you know, maybe the reason why the no parking area was established, that need is no longer there. Also, it's funny that Commissioner Fuller mentioned the digitized traffic control map. I have relatives that live in Kittle Hill and they were asking me about no parking signs in their neighborhood. Had the opportunity to go onto their website and could find the traffic control map clearly displayed on, on their website. It was easy to, you know, to, to see. And I, I think it would be, again, piggybacking off what Commissioner Fuller said, for us to be able to, to, to get that digitized and have it on our website for people to, to look at. It was, it was very detail oriented and you, you could clearly see the areas of the speed limits to no parking signs, one-way street and so forth on their website. So, I'd like to request that as well through, through Commissioner Fuller.
Okay, all right. Very good. Then, I think just by consensus, the, the board would direct staff to update and bring to the board traffic control map as described. Commissioner Brinkley, do you have anything this morning?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll just report on two things. The, the conversation that the board asked be had with the construction community about the update to the low-impact design manual will be this afternoon. And I and Planning Director Zaner will be participating in that meeting. And also, if you'll recall back during the retreat, the, the board had asked that the mayor be engaged with other parties, including mayors, about essential issues like, like approaches to, to housing. And I just want the board to know that I am in conversation with, in particular, Mayor Sproul and the town of Kittle Hill and, and other parties who are exploring all kinds of housing options to, from workforce housing to, to other kinds of affordability. And I'll continue to engage in those as, as they seem to be appropriate and as opportunities That would bring us to, back to items from the town manager. And we have a request for a closed session. And so, you have the citations before you for the general statute reference. And a motion would be in order to go into closed session. And I'll go ahead and make, while I'm at it, I'll just go ahead and make the motion. This would be a motion that the board be in closed session to discuss possible property acquisition located at one oh five West Sea Chase Drive in accordance with general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a couple of seconds. And I will poll the board. Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
And the mayor is aye. So, the board will be in closed session. The board has returned to open session. Commissioner Brinkley is with the board by phone at this point. So, I'll ask Town Attorney Leidy to report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the board, a quorum of the board did participate in the closed session, but no actions were taken.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board this morning? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.